To order the May 25th, 2017, meeting of City Council in City Council chambers. It's a couple minutes past 7:30. Please rise for the flag salute and roll call. Or the invocation first, and then we'll have the flag salute.
I was hoping you'd forgotten.
We're not going to have a roll call tonight.
Often in the course of my past eight years here on City Council, I've felt our beautiful city hovering about to take a step toward a successful, resilient, a sustainable future. Sometimes we've taken that step, and sometimes we step back. And tonight, we may take another small step toward a better future for our city. Let us remember always that our city can't prosper unless the least among us prospers, and that building a future to sustain us over the next 100 years means building laws, infrastructure, and intentions that serve everyone in this community and in the community of our future. Planning for how those people will travel, how those people will eat, and how those people will lead happy lives. Tonight, we may take such a step, and it is my sincere hope that this and future City Councils have the opportunity to take many more such good steps in the years to come. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your brother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mealy, for those appropriate words. And speaking of the roll call, our Council President, Dr. Williamson, is not present tonight, so I'll be taking charge of the meeting, and with a lot of help from my friends. We'll move to item four, limited courtesy of the floor. And there is none, so we'll move on from that. Let's move to item five, public hearing on the bike path.
Randy, approval of the council minutes?
Did I miss that?
Item three.
Oh, yeah, I did. I skipped right past three. We'll move to three first. Approve of City Council Minutes dated 5/11/17. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, changes, corrections? Hearing done. Mrs. Frank on the resolution or approval?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0. And now, we will move to the public hearing on the bike path. And I hereby declare the public hearing on the bike path open.
Good evening, Vice President, Members of City Council. What I'm presenting to you tonight is a public hearing for the bike path. In accordance to the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, anytime you make ordinance amendments, you're required to have a public hearing that affords the general public an opportunity to speak. So this evening, what we're proposing to is amend is Article 511 of the Operation of the Vehicle Code, Article 1311, and 1379 of the zoning ordinance. What these ordinance amendments are going to do is create a bike path and a bike map to make Williamsport a safer and more vibrant area for both bikes and pedestrians, and at this time, we can take public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nar. Is there anyone present tonight who would like to speak in favor of the amendment? The first hand I saw was Mr. Walz, so we're going in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and members of council. My name is Jerry Walls. I'm a volunteer on the board and chairman of the Board of the 22-County Susquehanna-Greenway Partnership. And as you are aware, we have a number of River Town revitalization projects underway, including a Heart of Williamsport Civic Engagement Initiative here in Williamsport. But one of the things we're also very active in working on is to revitalize river towns, and one of the techniques that we're using is to help those municipalities create walkable, bikable communities, and thereby make them more attractive to a wider age range of people to come and live in those communities, especially younger people, and to make these communities bike-friendly and pedestrian-safe for whole families, kids especially. One of our grand ideas is a mega-trail from Lake Ontario up the Genesee River and connecting to the Pine Creek Trail. And the Pine Creek Trail's already done down to Jersey Shore, and then hooking up to the trails that the county is working to achieve, including the extension of the River Walk up to Jersey Shore and from the River Walk in Williamsport on down to Monty Montgomery and on to the Chesapeake Bay. So that alone would be a 400-mile trail. We're also working up the North Branch with North Branch Trails. But the importance of mentioning this is that this big trail system, mega-trail system, will create a destination for people of that interest, and by the way, they will have to have a place to stay as they go along those pathways. So that should create some business for our local hotels and bed and breakfast, our restaurants, ice cream shops, which are our favorite with bicyclists, and all kinds of other specialty retail. And with that, I would like to register our support for the bike path map, and then also for the complete streets ordinance revisions, which are on your agenda as well.
Thank you, Mr. Walz. Mr. Murawski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring greetings from the Lycoming County Commissioners, and I wanted to share with you something we had happen today that I think is relevant to this initiative that we have. The Pennsylvania Wilds has been a very active organization here in Lycoming County. We are the eastern gateway to the 12-county Pennsylvania Wilds region. And we have representatives from their organization at the County Commissioners Meeting this morning. We also had representatives from the State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. And what they told us was that we are looking at an annual return on investment of $1.7 billion into that 12-county economy every year because of the activities that support the Pennsylvania Wilds. And one of the main staples of that entire program is a vast trail system that is under development. I like to characterize, like, you know how the universe continues to expand? Well, in this case, we're seeing the trail system in the Pennsylvania Wilds continue to expand all the time. And in our part of the galaxy here, we're trying to do the same thing. We're expanding that system. They have told us that the Susquehanna River Walk, when we opened that in 2010, was absolutely critical to their marketing efforts. And in fact, what we're seeing now with the Susquehanna River Walk is we have opportunities to make that bigger and better. The county did get a DCNR grant to extend the River Walk another three miles to connect Penn College, your recreational facilities on the west end of town, and ending up at Susquehanna State Park. As a part of that, that has now been recognized in the top 10 trail gaps in the state of Pennsylvania, that particular project, in the Pennsylvania Outdoor Recreation Plan. So the state is taking notice. Harrisburg is taking notice of what we are doing. And the question is, how can we do more? When we worked with the city and the Mayor's Bike Committee as a partner, we've identified this map that's in front of you here today, and we're continually looking to try to find connections between the city and the River Walk. And as you know, we've done great revitalization efforts over the last decade or so, and Mr. Nichols's project was, I guess, the crown jewel with Phase Two of the Transit Center. And now, everybody's focused on the old city revitalization area. And Lycoming College and their gateway that they're going to do, the new gateway building that's going to go and front Bazin Street. So we're working at making that a two-way system. We're working at Streetscape. And now, a center of activity is going to be focused on Bazin Street. And the question is, what can we do there to enhance bicycle and pedestrian activity along the Bazin Street corridor and make a connection to the River Walk? This plan shows a connection eventually to the River Walk, and what we want to do is talk about the first step in the implementation of this bike path that happened this morning at the County Commissioners Meeting. The Commissioners are going to apply for a DCED grant in the amount of $206,000 to construct what we call the Bazin Street River Walk Connector. It's a two-phase project because of the cost of it is nearly $1 million total. The first phase is what you see in orange, and this will be looking at the sidewalk system that right now is substandard, it doesn't meet Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, and it goes underneath the I-180 overpass, and then the sidewalk just ends as you're heading over to Jefferson Lane and over by the sewage treatment plant. So the area in orange is what we're going to apply for a grant today on, and we are going to use our 15 percent match from the county's Act 13 Legacy Funds, which are dedicated just for recreation purposes. And we should know whether we're going to get this grant in the fall, but if we do, what this is going to pay for is a sidewalk reconstruction system over at Bazin Street from Panera Bread over to the Jefferson Lane area under the I-180 overpass. That's on PennDOT property, and we worked with PennDOT, and they are going to give permission for this project. So when the sidewalk reconstruction, we're going to end up with a 10-foot-wide sidewalk, which would be more than adequate for the new traffic flow of bikes and pedestrians through that area. We're also going to be looking at the signal system in the existing crosswalk area to make that safer. We're going to introduce a pedestrian countdown system on the signal system so you know how long you have as a pedestrian to get across, and we're trying to increase the timing for the peds through there. The second phase, which we'll apply for later with subsequent grants, is the area in yellow. So we'll be building a ramp system up from Jefferson Street area, and we will cross at-grade with the Cedar Cog Joint Rail Authority's Trackage, which Jerry is vice chairman of. And we met with the rail authority folks, and they will cooperate with us to create a new at-grade railroad crossing that will be safe. And we'll also be fixing that wall area in there that right now is showing some structural instability. The rail authority is going to partner on that. They're going to provide $25,000 of the $50,000 cost to fix that wall system. And then, we're going to then be able to connect to the green on the map, which is the existing River Walk. So when it's all said and done, you'll have a new gateway from Lycoming College to the River Walk, and the college people love it because Dr. Trakety told us they're trying to integrate programs between Lycoming and Penn Colleges where the students go back and forth, and the conduit that will be between the two colleges for bike-ped activity and the students is going to be the River Walk. So we're ready. We're set to go with the county to forge this partnership, and this is not the only thing, obviously, on that map. There'll be other things that we'll work on over time, but we think this will be a great first start.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Council. I'm David Stone, and resident of Williamsport, and just wanted to give you a little history. A little over two years ago, my wife and I took a bicycle vacation to Portland, Oregon, and out there, met the bicycle coordinator. And Portland, as you may know, is one of the leaders in promoting cycling in the city. And we were kind of inspired, so when we came back, I made an appointment with the mayor and said that we need to do something in the city for bicycling, and we need a bike coordinator to do that, and I would volunteer to do it for a dollar a year and business card. So that was our deal. So anyway, we've been meeting on the committee for about the last two years, and a lot of the gentlemen you see here have been instrumental in moving that forward. And our vision really was more focused on what we can do in the city. There are two problems we are trying to address. One is to improve safety of pedestrians and cyclists. We've all seen from time to time these horror stories of somebody getting hit, and fortunately, we haven't had too many fatalities, but it certainly, there are some problem areas. The other thing is, we wanted to make it a more bike-friendly city because we're interested in the quality of life. As a person who's lived here for a long time, the quality of life's important to me, and I think the quality of life's important for the long-term development of the city. And one of the ways that you improve the quality of life is to have more people out and about. You don't want to have everybody sitting in their house or in their car. When you see people walking around, riding their bicycles, I know when I ride my bike, I go down the street, wave at people on their front porches, and say hello to everybody. And so, it kind of creates an atmosphere that is conducive to trying to make the city a place where people want to be. And I think that's kind of was our overall objective. The other obvious benefit is health. The more people get out and about and do things, healthier they are, and we all know that our sedentary lifestyle is not being helpful to our overall health. So in order to accomplish that, we spent considerable amount of time trying to think, what is the problem of people using cycles? And while individual neighborhoods are fairly safe to ride in, the interconnectedness of how do you get from one area to another without encountering some kind of significant barrier is what keeps a lot of people from cycling. So that's why we spent some time trying to create this bike map, where we are trying to figure out, how do you get people to connect to different areas in the city? And we wanted to do it in a way that people feel safe. A lot of people said they would ride more if they felt safe, but they just don't feel the mixing it up with the traffic is something they want to do, and especially if you want to take small children out and take them down to the library or to the River Walk or wherever, it's difficult to do that. So that was why we developed the map. And what we, the ordinance that is before you tonight, really supports this and our whole effort of trying to say, as we develop things in the future, let's look for some of these problem areas and come up with some good engineered solutions so people will feel better about being out either on foot or on their bicycle. And also, the other key thing that we found, we did a survey this summer, or I guess it was last summer, that asked people what they thought about it, and one of the main things they would want is safe places to ride and also more connections to the river. Because one of the crazy things that people do now is they live in Williamsport, they load the bikes in the back of their car, they drive down to the River Walk, they unload the bikes, and then they ride down the River Walk. I mean, it would seem to be more sensible if we had a nice way to get to the River Walk just to do that in the first place. So I think what we're trying to do tonight is to set a direction. We're obviously not going to solve the problems instantly, but I think this ordinance is important as far as setting a direction for what we're going to do as far as developing in the future. And so, I think it's kind of the capstone of our two years of effort. The other thing I just mentioned is that we really are moving to the next phase now, which we're going to try and work more and more on bicycle safety. And so, we are going to work with the city to do some bicycle safety things at the kids' summer camp this summer in Brandon Park and in Memorial Park. We're working with the YMCA to do some bike safety things with their kids. And we also have a program with Stepover and South Williamsport at the Senior Center to do one for Southside. So I think, you know, the physical structure is important for safety, but education is also important, so we want to do both things. So anyway, we thank you for, I know, I've met with a number of the committees so far, and we appreciate all the effort that you've put into it, and I think we've got a good ordinance, and we hope that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak in favor of Mayor Campan?
I think it's pretty obvious that I support this, but publicly, I'd like to thank all the individuals in regards to putting this together, especially David Stone for approaching me a couple of years ago. Thank you for your leadership in that regards, and when he said that, of course, I said absolutely, and I do owe you that dollar for 2017, so I'll pay you later on tonight. Okay? Thanks.
Are there any other requests to speak in favor of the ordinance we're going to address that has to do with the bike path? Are there any people here tonight or any individuals that would like to, that want to speak not in favor of it? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on the bike path. And we are going to move item seven up, ordinance amending Article 511 of the city's codified ordinance, Operation of Vehicles, first reading. Mrs. Frank, would you read that in short form, please?
An ordinance amending Article 511 of the city's codified ordinances, Operation of Vehicles.
Thank you. Is there a motion in favor of this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Grado?
Good evening, Vice President Allison, Members of Council. Well, with the committee speaking, I won't speak too long on this, other than in the format that it's being presented to council. There are two ordinances that'll go through two readings. This is first reading. And as was mentioned earlier, the first, 511, is the vehicle code, where we modify the bicycle and push carts and animals, and separated bicycles into its separate article, and that made it consistent with the vehicle code. And as Gary mentioned, Article 1311 and 1379, they were zoning ordinances relating to street design. The definition of street was modified, and I'll just briefly read the one sentence, "That all streets will be designed, built, and operated to enable safe access for all users in that pedestrian, bicyclists, and public transportation users of all ages are able to safely move along and across the street right of way." In the second section, 137902, we're adding, just most notably, that the Engineering Department and the Public Works Department shall consult the most current additions of the following engineering manuals as design guidelines to accommodate street users, and it lists the three notable ones for designing walkable and bikable streets, and that's Design Walkable Urban Thoroughfares from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, Urban Street Design Guide of National Association of City Transportation Officials, and Urban Bike Way Design Guides under the National Association of City Transportation Officials. I mean, so those are basically the ordinance changes that we're adding. And then, the third item on the agenda, which is the resolution adopting the bike map that's listed here. This was reviewed by both the City Planning Commission, it was given to them earlier in draft review, and then recently, on May 15th, it was reviewed, and they recommended approval of the ordinance amendments. And it was also through the Public Works Committee, and I'll let the chairman of that committee speak to it. We did, as part of that Public Works Committee, it was requested that we provide an additional bike map that more plainly showed the streets, that the different routes and loops that were identified in the bike map, that's part of the resolution, and we provided that, the county provided that to us, and we gave that to council this evening. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions on any of the items.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grado. Mr. Smith, would you care to address the first ordinance that we're considering right now?
This was brought to us, Public Works Committee, on Tuesday of this week, and this, as Mr. Grado had pointed out, is an amendment to the city vehicle code, which differs somewhat from the state motor vehicle code. We do have our own ordinances that pertain to certain streets and so forth, and rules and regulations in the city. This amendment, as he pointed out, states that bicycles and other pedicycles and how they are to be operated according to our city codes. First of all, I want to thank Mark, and Jerry, and also David for all the work that's been done on this. We've been working on this, as you pointed out, for two years, David, and it's been coming to the Public Works Committee, and we've worked through the process, all the different parts of it, and it's now, as I pointed out the other day, coming to fruition. So we want to thank all of you for the time and effort that you've put into this. One of the things that David did enlighten us about, and he pointed out that there are going to be training courses in safety for both young folks, middle-aged people, and older folks that ride, so that they can ride and enjoy the riding in safety. I also brought up that in the Public Safety Committee coming up, we're going to be discussing that and how the rules pertaining to drivers are going to be enforced, so that our police department, police officers are aware of what these ordinances are and how they would be enforced to provide a safe area for the bicyclists. And of course, vice versa, if there's bicyclists that are not doing it properly, then they should be so cited. But with these courses that are going to be brought out, I think that's going to be a great training area for people of all ages. And not to get ahead, but the bicycle map, when we look at this, this is going to be a great area in the city of Williamsport for bicyclists. So we did review this, as I pointed out, and we passed it with a positive recommendation for approval to full council.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Members of council, comments or questions? Mr. Noviello?
Just to kind of quickly reiterate some of what's been said already, I don't think we can get people like Mr. Stone, and Mr. Murawski, and Mr. Walz together and not see something positive happen. We've seen it time and time again, at least in my tenure, so it shows me that the kind of drive and initiative that they have on behalf of the city and the county, it's very commendable, and we want to thank everybody for their time and effort. And I think these gentlemen and the issues that they brought before us tonight is an indication of Ms. Mealy's earlier comments about taking a step forward, and we've got some good gentlemen leading the way here, so we thank you for that effort.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
I just wanted to further point out, I think that both of these are excellent steps for the city to take, and as a cyclist and as a frequent pedestrian, they're very near to my heart here in town. But I think that these are, that these are two elements of what we're seeing as will be part of kind of a larger cycling program, as Mr. Stone mentioned. We need cyclist education. We also need, and have badly needed for a long time in the city, driver education in terms of sharing of the road. And we haven't, I don't know, we haven't shaped that all that well yet, but it's clearly something that's coming because we need all the folks who share the road to be aware that it's being shared. And many of us have become painfully aware of that, as Gary. So I think that this is a really important step, and we also won't be able to leave it here. We need to make certain that we continue to advocate for pedestrian and cyclist use when we're rebuilding streets, and when we advocate with our public safety officials to talk about sharing the road, because both of those elements are key to actually creating a town that's friendly to multiple uses within, to multiple users and multiple uses. I did have one quick question, Mr. Grado, on the second ordinance, the 1311 point, actually, excuse me, 1379.02. When a street is designated as an official bike route by resolution of City Council, when a street that is designated as an official bike route by resolution of City Council is resurfaced, repainted, reconstructed, repaired, or otherwise rehabilitated, City Council may require that appropriate bicycle markings be incorporated into the street design. Is there a mechanism for ensuring notification?
Is there a?
Will City Council be asked, basically?
Well, yes. I mean, we would indicate through the Public Works Committee, you know, which streets that we are doing, identify them as being bike routes, and care will be taken to ensure that certain improvements are done to ensure that they're safe for bicyclists. For example, Bicycle Safe Inlet Grates and making sure that the grates are placed there. I mean, if there are extraordinary costs related to construction, you know, then council, we put "may" require because we knew that the cost may be more burdensome, and we can't do everything that's in the code, but I think council would, and through the public works- the public works committee, let's say, would, we'd identify that when we're doing the improvements, to let them know what we're doing and what's the appropriate way to address the bicycle infrastructure improvements, let's say.
But so I just want to be sure that, because all of us won't be on council, and because even if we are on council, we may or may not remember that X, Y, or Z, you know, Memorial Avenue in that particular block is a bikeway. So just to be certain that those do get called out specifically when we're doing reconstruction. So I understand that, right, good faith efforts are one thing, and "may" is not "shall." But I think, you know, if and when we can afford to make as many, you know, as many bike-friendly amendments to the streets as we can, that would be a good thing. And we won't necessarily know to ask for it unless we're made aware to begin with. So, good. That's everything I have.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. Ms. Frank on the ordinance, please, first reading.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. And the ordinance passes on the first reading. We'll move to item eight, the second related ordinance, amending Articles 1311 and 1379 of the zoning ordinance, in short form, please. Ms. Frank?
An ordinance amending Article 1311 and 1379 of the city of Williamsport codified ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Grado, will you accept the motion?
I'll move. Second.
In a second? Okay. Now, Mr. Grado?
I have really nothing more to add on this.
Mr. Smith, Public Works.
This ordinance also did come to Public Works for review on this past Tuesday. And we looked at some definitions, and the definition of street, one of the things that I wanted folks to be aware of is all streets will be designated, built, and operated to enable safe access for all users in that pedestrians, bicyclists, and public transportation users of all ages and abilities are able to safely move along and across the street right-of-way. And the second part of it dealt with the new streets and reconstruction. And that's also where it was stated that city council may require that appropriate bike markings be incorporated into the street design. And as Liz just said, what we're hoping is that Rebecca will remember that 25 years from now, when we're probably not going to be here, hopefully alive, but maybe not sitting here, that yet you'll remember we did that. And where those bike routes are, because you'll have that for your files. One of the things I thought about, and maybe we could encourage, would be, and we do in a lot of other cases, a private and public partnership. And when we look at the cost of what that may be, and certainly, I think that the current members of council are willing to find those dollars, if at all possible, to do those markings, I'm sure we will. But let's hypothetically say a few years down the road, for some reason, it's going to cost maybe more than what we felt we could afford. Maybe that's where a private partnership could come in possibly, and help out with some of those. Because I think we're going to see this bike route be very successful as years go on. And I think, I'm predicting there's going to be a lot of users of this bike path. And that could also lead to more bicycle organizations and clubs, things of that nature. So if that would occur down the road somewhere, perhaps those folks could also be involved in helping us through other ways of securing funds to maybe to complete it to everyone's satisfaction. So we did review that, and really, nothing else to add, other than what Mr. Grado has already said. And we passed that with a positive recommendation to full council for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Mealy?
Just one small note. I remember a couple of years ago, reading about a neighborhood in Memphis that got all fired up one weekend and painted their own bike lane. So, it's been done. I'd like to think that we'd approve it first, but, you know, it has happened, Mr. Smith elsewhere. I think there's a precedent, so, excellent.
From the ground up?
Exactly.
Any other, Councilwoman Katz?
I just want to thank the three gentlemen for all the work and the passion that you put into our city. The Greenways, incredible. I mean, you've been doing this for quite a while, Jerry, and it's been so appreciated in so many different areas. David Stone, your passion for bikes is incredible, absolutely incredible. You've taken on so many different projects. Mark, thank you for what you have done, for getting the verbiage in these ordinances with what the laws are. And I want to thank you very much for that. And I think everybody does appreciate the hard work that goes into everything that you all do.
Well said.
I guess I just wanted to point out, Scott Williams, who's also the transportation planner, actually drafted most of this.
Well, then, let's have a round of them. That's the hard part.
And did all the maps, right, John?
Yeah.
Which is he?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
He did the map, too.
Yeah, he did all the maps.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Grado. Councilman Henderson?
I know last summer, my family and I went on a little bike tour through the city. And when you consider that I have five kids, we can look pretty intimidating coming down the street. And we have a lot of fun doing that. And we look forward to, you know, seeing more possibilities, I guess, for things like that. We haven't been able to bike from our house to the Riverwalk. And so we, you know, we're excited to be able to lay the groundwork with this now, if we can just follow the law and do what we say. That's always the trick to it, isn't it? So, but thank you for this.
That certainly is, yes. Any other comments from council? Hearing done. Ms. Frank on the ordinance, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. And that also passes on first reading. Now, we're going to move item 10 up, resolution, city of Williamsport approving a bicycle map. Is there a motion?
I'll move. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Frank, it is long, but I'm going to ask you to read the whole thing, because it really doesn't mean anything unless it's people hear what's in the resolution.
A resolution approving city of Williamsport bicycle map. Whereas, the city of Williamsport envisions itself as a model of excellence, as a family-friendly, well-planned city that focuses on businesses, education, and culture and recreation opportunities. To achieve this, the city of Williamsport is dedicated to providing a diverse community where people can live, work, and play in a safe, clean, vibrant, and proeducational environment. And whereas, in order to present itself as safe, vibrant, family-friendly, and well-planned, the city of Williamsport should not have a streets policy that values the convenience of some users at the expense of the safety of others. Instead, the streets of Williamsport shall be designed to meet the needs of all users, including not only motor vehicles, but also pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users of all ages and abilities. This shall apply to all new streets and to the reconstruction, rehabilitation, repair, and maintenance of existing streets. And whereas, the city of Williamsport should seek to integrate and connect its transportation, recreation, and public space networks to create a community with minimal barriers to a safe, efficient movement by walking, biking, public transit, and driving. And whereas, the city of Williamsport recognizes that increased rates of walking and bicycling benefits public health, benefits the environment, and benefits taxpayers by decreasing the depreciation and wear on public transportation infrastructure. And whereas, the currently adopted comprehensive plan for the city of Williamsport, adopted by Resolution 7146, July 21, 2005, prioritizes the promotion of land use patterns that reduce vehicle trips and encourage pedestrian bicycles and transit alternatives, the development that incorporates bike pedestrian facilities, the development of community, streetscape, and traffic calming plans, and the interconnection of facilities with bicycles and pedestrian routes. And whereas, the currently adopted city of Williamsport Planning and Zoning Code, Title IX, Section 1379.02, states that the arrangement, character, extent, width, grade, and location of all streets shall conform to the comprehensive plan. And whereas, the currently adopted city of Williamsport Traffic Code, Title I, Section 501.02, accepts all definitions of terms ascribed in the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code. And whereas, the city of Williamsport desires to have the consistency among its adopted ordinances, between its ordinances and its adopted comprehensive plan, and between its adopted ordinances and Commonwealth law. Be it hereby resolved that the city council of the city of Williamsport intends to amend the aforementioned ordinances and adopt the attached map as the city of Williamsport's official bicycle map.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. And you can take the next couple items off. Just kidding.
The next couple meetings?
Okay, now you're taking them. Mr. Grado?
Yes. The ordinances do refer to the official map. This is the official map, based on two years of work with the bicycle committee. I mean, the city has had bicycle routes, bike paths through the city. This is a combination of that. We've had the Northern Route through the Valmont section, but it connects all the parks from East End through Brandon Park. We've also got the Central Business District Route we used to have, so there's, that was modified somewhat. And then with the new, since the old bike map was prepared, we've got the Riverwalk, so we have all of the connections there. And at the extreme West End, as Mark said, there's the effort to extend the Riverwalk to Susquehanna State Park, as well as the Newberry Connection. So a lot of these were developed into loops, because there's, you know, if people want to just go in a certain neighborhood, so I know in the committee, you know, in their future work, will, you know, provide, say, maps or signage or apps, for example, on where they are for people. So, I mean, this was, there was a lot of work, and we actually took a bike ride through each of the towns, the sections, to make sure that it was kind of an appropriate bike path. And I know Dave does have a little help with his electric bike, and I was tough for keeping up with Dave. I was wondering why he was so far ahead of me until I, and I was breathing. But, I mean, this is a good effort, and it's something that we really need to keep mindful of. It's not just us. It's also with PennDOT, when they're designing Third and Fourth Street through the city, as well as land developments, because this is part of the zoning code. So this is a good effort or a good start, so.
Thank you, Mr. Grado.
And this was also reviewed at Public Works.
Right. Mr. Smith, Public Works.
We did review this resolution also on Tuesday of this week. And I'm glad you asked, Ms. Frank, to read that in its entirety, because as we read that, we felt that that was extremely well-written. Did you write that, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. It is very well-written. And we appreciate the wording that was used in that. And I think it conveys the entire picture of the bicycle routes, what it's going to do for the citizens, the health benefits that we're going to accept. Dave, you were cheating when you used a motorized one. But we know you're right. We know you're right.
I'm gonna get one, too, in the next month.
Next month. Is that going to be your retirement gift from the city?
I'm allowed to use it.
I would like to say that if I were to, if someone wants me to read the whole thing out loud, I would.
Well, there's so much information in there. I'm not going to go over it because she read it. But, you know, and this is a family-friendly type of entity, and we're talking more about family-oriented projects in the city, and family entertainment complexes in the city, and things of that nature that make our city far more attractive to folks to come in for economic development. And it's a great place to live, and we want to continue to add amenities to make it a great place to live. And we did look at this map and went over the streets in it, and we presume, obviously, they were chosen carefully of the layout of how those streets will be. And perhaps, in the near future, we'll see that maybe changed or expanded into different areas. And also, it was gratifying to hear Mark bring up about the county today, willing to step up and help with this. So when we get the county also involved, that's great, that we've got partnerships here, that we're trying to work on many projects involving the region, meaning the county, the city, other boroughs, and other townships. And it's really, really good to see all these entities working together for the good of our city. And also, those folks that are interested in the carbon footprint, obviously, this is going to be a whole lot less with bicycles. We're not generating a lot of oxides and pollutants that are in the air, although it did say we'll cut down maybe some public transportation. We've got to be careful of that. We still have to have our buses run. But we did review that and passed it with a positive recommendation to full council for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Comments or questions from council? Ms. Mealy?
Just one quick question. I assume the first, not the map that we got today, but the first map that was in our packet is the official map.
Yes. I mean, I know the other map, really, and it's, has the names of the streets of the city map, but I think the first map identified the Riverwalk and the connections and the Newberry.
I guess what I'm asking, actually, is, seems like before it becomes the official record, we may want to change the title there. If nothing else, remove "recommended official city bicycle routes." They are the official city bicycle routes at this point, correct? So, might as well not hudge about it. But aside from that, it's a beautiful map, and I like, to a certain extent, the way that it summarizes where we're going and where we have been. I used to ride down Third Street as a kid and think, what is Bike Route J? And now I've come across it up on Pine Creek and all over the place, you know, these routes that run through PA. So it's good to see that on there. I think that's been there since the 70s, right?
Yeah. I mean, that was PennDOT's route through the city. So there are different routes as we're going through here. So they're identified as all of them. So there was an overlap with Bike Route J, as PennDOT takes that through the different counties of the state.
Anyway, it's excellent work. Just a question about the wording on the title, so that we're sure we're committed.
Yes.
That's everything.
Any other questions or comments? I just have a couple of, a couple thoughts I've had as we've processed the whole thing and gotten information along the way. It just, is the right time for this, I think? There, as you've noted, Mr. Grado, there've been bike paths through the city, but, and it was a good idea, but they, there wasn't a well-designed plan around them and commitment to making that viable part of the city. And while the ordinances do that, I really think this resolution is, I don't want to say a manifesto, but it kind of, in a way, lays down a vision for the city, not just for today, but for the future, as Ms. Mealy talked about earlier, and even in her comments before the meeting. We've talked about that amongst ourselves in a lot of different areas, that we're trying to look not at today, or next month, or next to look not at today, or next month, or next year. We're trying to do things five, ten years down the road that, you know, we really won't be an integral part of at that time, but it's going to benefit our city in our area because as you read down through that resolution, as we accomplish those things, it's gonna be a place, like Mr. Smith pointed out, a place that people will want to visit, but we want a place that people will want to live and say, this is, and, and I think the generation coming up are more focused that way. And it reminded me of way back when I was a child, bicycle riding was, everybody did it. We rode to school, and we rode after school everywhere. We went to playgrounds or, and, and all summer long, it was a real, it was just a joy to get out on your bicycle in the summer and ride around the neighborhood, ride with other kids. And it seems that somewhere along the line, we lost that as adults, and at some point it began to fade away from our lives, and it was more a thing for bicycle enthusiasts or for the young kids. But it's really something that, I think it, it does us physical good, but I think it helps us, our soul, our, our emotions to, to have a bicycle underneath you. And there's nothing like going down the street or going down a hill, which there's some hills I wouldn't do anymore like I used to, and jump over things, but to feel you're free, you're in the air, it's really good. So, I'm looking forward to that. And I think, the other thought I had is, is at the heart of this, why it seems so viable has, has been brought up along the way. This wasn't just an idea that was acted upon, there was two years of working and planning and going through processes to get this to the place where we don't just have an idea that's fleshed out, we, we actually have a plan to integrate so many different things. And that's, that's a thrilling thing because that, it really has a solid foundation under it. And I really think if we, as it's done right so far, if we follow through and do everything else right, and we bring people in that, that want to use it and encourage people that live here that want to use it, I think some of these things in the ordinances that were a little fearful, we're not here, they might be forgotten, I think ideally there'll be a generation of people coming up and using it that will make certain that the laws are followed and that, that it remains, the maintenance is taken care of. And, and I also think there's, there's gonna be an adjustment period between bicycles and cars and, and everything, but we can work through that. I think in the end it's gonna be a good thing because with my job, I do a lot of driving around the city, and we all drive, and the thing that strikes me is we could all afford and do better to slow down a little bit and not be in a hurry to get up to the stop sign and not be in a hurry to get through the stop sign and, and just take our time a little bit more and be careful as we drive. And I think this'll help us to focus on some of that. And so, I think it's gonna be a win-win situation all around, and we are very appreciative of, of all those who worked on it and, and what we, and what you have to show for it, and we're a hundred percent behind it, I would say. And I know Dr. Williamson would say the same thing were he here. So, no further comments or questions on the resolution, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
And the resolution passes. Now, we're going to move to item six. Mr. Nar, please.
What I bring before you is a public hearing request. In order to establish Article eleven twenty-two of the Mobile Food Vendors Ordinance of the City of Williamsport, under the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, as a requirement, it requires a public hearing to allow the general public to have comments during that time, and this item is on the agenda for this evening to be passed in first reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nar. I hereby declare the, the public hearing on the food truck ordinance open. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak in favor of the food truck ordinance? And I see none. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak against the food truck ordinance? And...
I guess we've got a line for the asking for explanation. I'm not aware, but I know there's been a lot of controversy.
Well, we're gonna discuss the nuts and bolts of it later. We're more or less talking about the, the concept of it and anything. I mean, if, if there's something specific you'd like to speak against, you have to come up to the podium and be a part of the procedure.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what the hearing's for, is to keep an orderly. Yeah, well, there, there won't be a chance when we discuss the ordinance to directly address it. You can address it at the end of the meeting. This is the first vote on the question.
Correct, yes. So, the first hearing, and first, I mean, the first reading of the ordinance, the first vote, then in two weeks there'll be another one. So, I'll leave it up to you whether you want to come up now.
I really don't have to, because I have it in the newspaper, so I don't know if I can tell you.
Okay, and then...
I did ask a question, so maybe I should...
Are questions allowed in a public hearing? Norm?
It may shorten things if you can go into the ordinance itself, that may answer the questions.
You mean that Mr. Nar could go into the ordinance right now?
No, but he goes into the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
And actually, when it comes to that, we, we did do public notice to give the people the opportunity to come in and discuss it.
Right.
Or ask questions at that time. So, in between first and second reading, if they do have questions, they do have the ability to come in and basically look at the ordinance. Under the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, we do do two advertisements to let the general public know that they can come in and review it at any time.
Okay, I would suggest that then. We'll go through the ordinance tonight, the nuts and bolts. You'd have an opportunity to come in, or at our next meeting, you can address it in the beginning with the limited courtesy of the floor. You can speak to one item, to a specific item, which you would be doing during the limited courtesy of four, before we even get to the ordinance. So, that would be a good way to address that. Okay, hearing, no one else, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we will move to the ordinance, which is item nine. Is there a motion? All right, Mrs. Frank, I need you to read it in short form, please.
An ordinance of the City of Williamsport, Leicoming County, Pennsylvania, establishing Article one-one-two-two, mobile food vendors of the codified ordinances.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Nar, please.
Good evening. What I present to you is the establishment of Article eleven twenty-three, the Mobile Food Vendors Ordinance. What the city has taken steps to do as far as to enhance the, the ability to downtown as well as to be cohesive with the general businesses within the downtown, this ordinance is to create, establish a set of guidelines that the mobile food vendors basically can follow, just like any other code, whether it be police enforcement, zoning, or code enforcement. It gives a basis of what they can and cannot do. And again, what is to do is, is to promote the enhancement of the downtown to allow basically new entrepreneurs to come into the downtown and create a vibrant business as well as keep the maintained brick and mortar places to continue to thrive as well. With establishing that, there were a couple, again, you have, you do have a copy of the ordinance, we do talk about licensing, and they would be required to come in and take out a complete application, which we do, will have on file at the Bureau Codes Department. In doing so, they would be required to take out a health license, they would be required to do an application at that time. Once they meet all the criteria that we do have in, in reference to the ordinance, then we would issue them a permit, and that permit is good for a one-year period, and they have to renew that each year, as well as any other licensing and things of that nature. As part of the requirement to have a mobile food vendors license, they will be required to have either a Department of Agriculture license, health license, or a health license that's issued by the city. In addition, they will be required to sign a hold harmless waiver from the city to, to keep the city from any liabilities that may happen because of their food truck or anything of that nature within why, why they're operating. In addition to that, they would be required to have a liability insurance of not, less than one million dollars per, per occurrence, in case, again, it's to protect the city in, in case of any liabilities and things of that nature. So, once they meet those criteria, then we would issue them a permit, and that permit would be valid. Now, there are general rules, and one of the main general rules that was, that was an issue and concern is the distance these establishments can be located within a brick and mortar place. And what the brick and mortar place that we're talking about is a facility that actually has a health license where they actually sell food to the general public. So, they would be required to stay outside of seventy-five feet from a brick and mortar establishment. In addition, there's other guidelines as far as staying away from a public fire hydrant. And again, like I said, it's, it's in here. As far as operating hours, they could set up at six-thirty in the morning, they have to be off the street at two forty-five AM that same day to allow the, the local downtown residents that may reside there, the ability to basically have a good night's sleep, that type of thing. So, they are gonna have a certain set of guidelines. As far as the enforcement of this, this would be enforced by both the Bureau of Codes and the City Police Department, and they did review that and did look at the ordinance at, at that time. In addition, and again, like I said, we're talking about the dials, revocation, suspensions of permits. There is a set of guidelines. If they fail to adhere to these guidelines, we have the ability to basically go out and talk to them, explain to them what they are, give them that opportunity to correct that action. If they continue to not correct that action or become a repeated violator of those requirements, then at that point, we do have the ability to suspend their health license. And in order, in order to suspend that health license, we would send them a notice, and they would be able to appeal. The appeal goes to the Department of Health, which, that's currently what we do have for a lot of the other health license departments, they would have to go. If they want to appeal anything that the city would enforce as far as the health code, they would go to the Board of Health. So, if they were in violation of certain things, we would send them a notice. At that point in time, they would basically have ten days to appeal to the Board of Health, and the Board of Health would determine what the steps and what the procedures they would actually enforce as far as whether it be a suspension or whether it be not allowing them to renew it for this year, something along that lines. But that's basically the denial, revocation, suspension of the permit. As far as where they can be located, again, one of the main things of it is, is cannot be within seventy-five feet of a brick and mortar place without written permission from a brick and mortar establishment that may want them there. In addition, the only other area of the city that would, we would require a restriction would be in the residential. They could not set up and operate within a residential zoning district. If they operate anywhere other than a residential zoning district, and they are outside that seventy-five feet of a brick and mortar place, and a business wants to allow them, they just would need written permission from that business to allow them to set up and operate at their facility. That's pretty much basically the, the basic foundation of the ordinance. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission. The only recommendation that the Planning Commission had is in the ordinance, we required the vendors to stay thirty feet from each other. They recommended that we remove that to give them that ability to set up in the same location, providing there's adequate parking. So, that was the recommendation. And again, we did, I did forward it to council, and I believe we got positive recommendation to have that removed. So, we did remove that, that they are not required to maintain a thirty-foot separation from the vendors. They're still required to maintain that seventy-five feet from a brick and mortar establishment. So, the Planning Commission did pass it with positive recommendation, and it did go through ERC, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nar. It did go through ERC, and I chair that, but I'm gonna pass it to...
You'll the floor to somebody else for, get on the hot seat.
To give some of the background on it.
Sure.
To Ms. Mealy.
I, I, I think actually the genesis of this ordinance came from, from both sides, both from food truck operators who are having difficulty figuring out exactly what they were and were not permitted to do within the city because of some existing city ordinances and simply policies that, that didn't really jive with, with ordinances. And, and then from the administration as well because there was some concern amongst the brick and mortar establishments in the city of unfair competition. So, Mr. Nar worked really exceptionally well to try to incorporate all of those concerns and, and find sort of resolutions to the various and sundry issues that, that faced both food truck operators and brick and mortar establishments in the community. And, and over the course of a couple of months, with review a handful of times by ERC and with the incorporation of commentary from both the food truck, members of the Food Truck Alliance here in, in the city, the Chamber of Commerce, a handful of brick and mortar establishments, we arrived at what we feel is perhaps not, not a perfect first stab, but, but certainly a very good first effort. And we all know that, that, you know, nothing's perfect straight out of the gate, but I think there will be ample time to, to see how, how this particular piece of legislation works out and to modify it as we need to, both for changing, perhaps, you know, sort of changing currents within the food industry as well as the changing needs of our community. That said, ERC, ERC did not review the absolutely final draft of this document, but we did review a prior draft and forwarded that, sent that on with more or less, you know, our blessing, I guess you will. I don't remember if we actually gave it a positive recommendation, help me guess. I, I don't, I don't think we, did we?
I don't think we did.
Okay, all right, good. I couldn't remember if we, we reviewed it a couple of times, and we, I couldn't remember if we voted on it in the long run or not, but anyway. From my personal perspective, Mr. Nar, I did have a couple of questions. There were a handful of things we discussed modifying in the final ordinance that didn't seem to have been modified in this final ordinance at the last ERC meeting, including We cite the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar annual fee, but I believe we were going to add a sentence that said something along the lines of, or as revised in Article X, the city's fee structure, so that we wouldn't have to go back and modify this ordinance when we modified the...
I thought we were gonna look at doing that on the second revision. We were gonna keep this as is, and Joe recommended that we keep this in there upon the second one when we have a final definition. At that point, we'll refer back to it of, of any additional ordinances, because we were gonna bring it back before second review.
Okay, all right, so it's coming back before second reading, and that's the, okay, good. Secondarily, and this is real minor, but if, if you could see this change happens, under one-one-two-two-point-oh-five-A, the following streets within the CBD, there should be a colon there.
Okay.
And that, it just will, I think greatly enhance comprehensibility if none of us are here to explain it to the next generation. But, but aside from that yet, like I said, Mr. Nar, we don't see a lot of ordinances created out of whole cloth in the city, and, and so, thank you very much. It took a, a lot of time and effort on your part, and, and I think we worked really hard to try to be sure that we didn't step on anyone's toes with this one. And, and there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of controversy, which is unusual, I think, when you're instituting a, a new piece of legislation. So, anyway, it's gone well so far. I hope it, I hope it moves well into the future. Thank you.
If I can add just real quick, it was reviewed by the solicitor as well.
Okay. Norm? Right. And I'll, I'll yield to Mr. Henderson if he has any further recollections or comments from ERC.
I think it was a very effective process. I know it was, it was good to have several of the food truck vendors to speak to it. I know it was, it was good to have several of the food truck vendors to speak to it and to speak their mind, and, and then, of course, the brick and mortar businesses as well. I, I'm glad that the appeal process is outlined very clearly there. I think that's very important for us. I did have one question on, let's see, it'd be 1122.05, and this would be letter I. No mobile food vendor unit shall use or maintain any outside amplified equipment, lights, or noisemakers. The lights there, I just was wondering...
It can create a safety issue, because when you have those type of flashing lights, it can create a distraction and maybe an issue. And again, we looked at all other municipalities, and 99% of them have that in there, so that they don't have the amplified music as well as the flashing lights, which can create an issue for, again, they're, again, they're on the street, so it would create a safety issue, so that what we, we would require that they would not be present.
I know in, in the copy that I have, it doesn't say flashing lights. I don't know if, should we incorporate that, you know, something to designate what kind of lights? Because if it's no outside lights...
That's, that's, that's an excellent point. We want them to have lights.
Right. They can have flashing lights.
So, you know, perhaps we can look at that for the second reading, to add the flashing in there, perhaps. And then, there was, there was another colon there that we missed on letter C, the top of the page there before 6:30, I believe there in my copy.
630.
I almost said the wrong one.
Yeah, 630, should be six colon three zero, just to throw that in there as well. Other than that, I would, I would agree with Councilwoman Mealy. I think this is a good start, and we'll have a better idea as we have gone through the season here, and, and perhaps the end of the season, we'll be able to see if anything needs to be changed at all, but I think this is a good start.
Councilwoman Katz.
With the lights, the scrolling that some of them have on their trucks, that's not a problem then, right? They have the scrolling of what their menus are?
Well, what we could, and again, it, it's up to the majority, but I think maybe if we eliminated anything as far as flashing or motion lights and allow them, if they had a stationary light that went across there as far as like a rope light, but what, I think what you're gonna run into for a safety factor, we may not allow them to have either motion or a flashing light.
I know there's at least one that has the scrolling. Okay? And I do have another question, too. When they apply for their permit, most of them will probably apply in the beginning of the year, but say you have someone that comes in, in, say, June, July, okay? It'll be the $250. Do we go, our permit goes from January to December, right?
Correct.
So, therefore, even if they come in, it's still, they would have to reapply in January?
Correct.
Again, okay? Do we state that in here, that it's yearly?
No, it is not stated.
And I think we should state that. So, people don't think that it's, you know, retroactive somehow, okay, that they go from June to June or whatever? And the other thing that I would suggest, too, is that when they do apply for their permits, that the ordinance is also handed in there with the...
Yeah, I have, I have a packet that has that setup, that'll have all that information on it. They will also get a copy of the city map, which will basically show what district's residential is and are not. So, they'll have a complete packet.
Fantastic. Great. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Other, Ms. Mealy.
Mr. Henderson, jog my memory, but I had notes on this other page here as well. Mr. Nar, I, I had also seemed to recollect from that last meeting we had with a few of the food vendors that we had discussed, increasing the, the time within which the mobile item H under 1122.05, they had said that 30 minutes might be a more appropriate amount of time to get completely set up, not 15.
Okay.
But, and, you know, and as somebody who works in the food business, 15 seemed a little short to me, so I don't, personally wouldn't have any major objections to, to something like that. I think we want them to be operational and, and functional on all levels, you know, when they, when they open their doors. One, one other question to Mr. Nar, this sentence wasn't in the prior iteration, wasn't in the iteration we got in our packets. Item K, comply with Article 1121 where applicable?
The reason for that, 1121 covers food vendors in general, for example, restaurants.
Okay.
And there's certain tie-ins to the State Department of Agriculture regulations.
So, it's not, we're not really citing any regulations that wouldn't have already existed?
It just ties in with the current ordinance that we have in reference to the Board of Health.
Got it. And how, I'm assuming this ordinance does not apply to ice cream trucks?
That is something that's completely separate.
Pardon me?
That's something that is completely separate, because most of your ice cream trucks actually have a Department of Health license. We do not restrict them as well as within the residential neighborhoods, so...
Right, obviously.
They are omitted from, from their type of...
I guess I'm just, there's no way that they could somehow or another be interpreted to fall under the...
No.
Okay. All right. I just, I just want to be clear, because it would be a shame if we lost the ice, I mean, maybe not such a shame in my neighborhood, but a shame if we lost the ice cream trucks. But they've got, you know, they've got the music and they've got the everything, that's kind of a classic element of the summertime experience. Right. Okay. All right, that's everything. Thank you.
Wait, welcome. Any other comments or questions? I had one, Mr. Nar, on the, the appeals process with the Board of Health. There, I'm not familiar with their process or the purview, but they would make their decision based on the entire ordinance.
The entire ordinance, as well as the requirements that the state holds with the Board of Health.
Mm-hmm. So, everything we have in here about space from brick and mortar, they would apply that. It doesn't have to do with just...
Upon final reading and enactment, they actually will meet the Board of Health. We do have a meeting set up to discuss with the Board of Health. They will get a copy of the ordinance and explain to them basically what the process is as far as the ordinance, the enforcement and things of that nature, as far as how they purview it. They do have the requirements and guidelines that they go through that they'll look at, and they'll make their recommendations.
Okay. And how many people are on the Board of Health?
I believe five.
Five? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Novello.
Gary, is there any sort of a pre-permit inspection of any of these vehicles, so that, or does that come through with their food license and permits and that?
Motor, they get licensed by the Department of Motor Vehicle, so they have to make sure they maintain there. Again, as part of the application process, that has to be, and again, what we do is the Bureau Codes Department actually licenses them to make sure it meets all the health requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, then? Hearing none on the ordinance. Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Novello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
And the ordinance passes on first reading. I'm gonna move item 14 up now, the land development, and Mr. Nar is already at the podium, so
What I present to unite is a land development request from Steve, Stephen and Leslie Kraus for the property located at 2851 South Reach Road. The current use is a vacant lot. It is located within the O Open Zoning District. The proposed plan is to construct a 19,940 square foot warehouse slash retail facility. On April 19, 2012, the zoning hearing board granted a use variance and required the property to adhere to the ML zoning district setback requirements. On April 1, 2015, if you recall, City Council approved a similar land development from a different owner permitting basically the water source as a well. We do not have an ordinance at this time basically restricting wells or anything like that, so that if you did approve a previous land development, it was key equipment that was gonna locate the similar type of facility within there. The property has since been sold to the Krauses, obviously, who wished to develop the plan that we're bringing before you now. The plan was reviewed by Lake Coming County Planning, and they made positive recommendations for your approval. I do have attached a copy of those comments, and the one comment where they're talking to you about the actual requiring of the open space as well as the ML zoning district setbacks, if you read, I know you have a small copy, but if you look at the left-hand corner, it does tell you that the zoning hearing board approved the use variance as well as a requirement for the ML zoning district. So, it is in there, they just, I'm assuming maybe have overlooked that in the comments section. But it does meet the requirements. The zoning hearing board did grant both of those variances, and it was noted on the land development plan. The City Planning Commission reviewed the plan and made positive recommendations for your approval with two recommendations, that the project add one handicap space to meet the required ADA parking requirements, and the second one, that prior to issuing of any occupancy permit, the owners would provide a letter from a licensed agency that tests the well to ensure it's potable drinking water. And I can answer any questions at this time, and I do have representatives here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nar. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second? I have a motion and a second. Questions, counsel? Ms. Mealy.
Just so I further understand this, Mr. Nar, the, the requirements of an open space district are different from the requirements of an ML, correct?
Correct.
But the zoning hearing board gave a variance saying that this project had to meet just the requirements of an ML.
Yes. And the reason why they, the justification was, is because up and down that South Reach Road area, that is all ML, so they thought it'd be easier to keep it uniformity within that area, so they did grant that variance using those requirements.
Understood. Just for my clarification, consequently, the required here, those are ML requirements, correct?
Correct.
Understood. So, if you can help me out with two items. One, the, they haven't met the minimum lot depth required?
No, they met the limit size, minimum lot size. The only thing that they didn't meet was the required setbacks of the building. In an open space, because it is made for recreation, they had the buildings maintained a certain distance from the property lines. Basically, it's like 50 feet from the property lines, so they felt because it is, rather than take it and make it really a non-conforming area, to keep it in sync with those districts' setback only. It met all the other requirements as far as lot size and everything, it just didn't meet the setbacks for the building that they wanted.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So, you've answered actually the other question I have, which is what would the requirements for an open space district have been? But the one question I have is, looking at this chart, the required minimum lot depth is 150 feet, the provided minimum lot depth is 65.9.
So, and again, it...
So, I'm, I'm looking at the chart.
Yeah, they, they met, they made them meet those requirements and basically gave them the exception from...
But I'm saying, this one doesn't meet the ML requirement, the minimum lot depth requirement for ML.
It does meet it.
In what way? If the minimum lot depth required is 150 feet and this, the, the provided minimum lot is 65.9?
Oh, I see what you're saying. It didn't meet them, but they did allow that in the variance. Again, they gave them, they gave them three variances, which was basically the restriction from the type of use, which in open space, you can't have those type of buildings, and they made them meet the requirements of the ML with the exception of the lot width.
Okay, so, so we definitively have a zoning hearing board approval on both not meeting the minimum lot depth for the ML requirement...
Correct.
And on meeting the ML requirements for setbacks instead of the open space requirements.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Sorry, I'm just looking. That's not exactly what it says in that wording. I understand where the county was coming from, but that, that was part of why I was confused. I mean, I reviewed it, and I was like, yeah, okay, it meets all those criteria, I see where they're coming from, and then it's like, wait, but it doesn't meet that one.
Well, what we had done is, when we provided it to county, we provided county with a copy of what was granted. It just wasn't on the drawing, so we didn't see, need any need to add that third one in there to change all the, all the drawings when it does meet the requirements. They just didn't note that in the note section. We thought that was a minor change.
Got it. Okay. But so, we've got, you say there were basically two variances granted, one to substitute the ML requirements for the open space, and a second variance to allow the minimum lot depth to be non-conforming.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, you know, we brought the same land development, you approved the same land development with the same requirements, I mean, the lot didn't change back in 2015 as well.
Right. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, you know, sort of what we've got going on, because there were some discrepancies even from what I was reading in the county notes and what I was seeing in the docs, so, but otherwise, that's it. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council?
The conditions set by the Planning Commission.
I'm sorry.
If you're going, if you're going to impose the conditions that were set by the Planning Commission, you have to add those to the motion.
Oh, okay.
The Planning Commission made two recommendations that required an additional ADA parking space, which the owner did agree to, as well as before we would issue them the occupancy permit on final, they would, they would do a testing to make sure it's potable water. So, they were the two recommendations, so that we're requesting that you amend your motion to include those two conditions that the Planning Commission recommended.
Yes.
Okay, so the Planning Commission, the Leansport Planning Commission recommended an additional ADA space, correct?
Correct.
And screening for potable water.
Correct.
Is there anybody that would like to make either or both of those?
That we add on the ADA handicap space, one handicap space, right, it's just one?
Correct.
And then test the well for potable water.
We have to put those in separately, then?
You can do them both together.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Any more comments on the amendment? Mrs. Frank on the amendment to the...
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Novello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. So, the plan's amended, and now we can move...
Land development.
Pardon me?
The land development now.
Yeah, the land development. Any more comments on the land development as amended, as it stands now? I see none. So, Mrs. Frank on the land development, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Novello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. And that passes as well. Thank you, Mr. Nar. And we're back up to item 11, resolution to accept certified local government grant. And Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to accept a certified local government CLA grant ME number 61706 be adhered by resolved by the City Council. The city wins, but that the mayor and city controller are authorized to execute a 2017-2018 certified local government grant agreement from the Pennsylvania Historic Mu- Museum Commission in the amount not to exceed $4,300.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion to accept this?
I'll move.
Good.
Motion and a second. Mr. Graydon.
Yes. This resolution authorizes the execution of a grant contract as part of the certified local government grant. The National Park Service and the State Historic Preservation Office recognizes that the city is a certified local government and enables us to apply for grants. It's a 50/50 grant, and of which the grant amount is $4,300. We put in a like amount of in-kind services, so there is no cash match as far as the city's concerned, and these are administrative costs that Mary Rosinski, who's our preservation officer, incurs to administer the HARB program, as like what you see on later on in the agenda. So, this is an annual grant that we've been able to secure to kind of defer the cost of her time for that, and a small amount for printing costs as such. This was reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Graydon. Ms. Mealy, Finance.
You know what? I wasn't at Finance.
Neither was I.
I was there, and so was Mrs. Katz. Mrs. Katz, would you care to address it?
Sure.
Sure, um, this is a grant that we have been getting for how many years now, John? It's quite a while we've been getting this grant.
Quite a few years, yes.
And, like you said, this is, uh, and our match is really an in-kind service with Mary for her time and effort, and really, uh, it's not a lot compared to what she does and for this, for this, uh, this, what, what this HARB is all about. And, uh, so, uh, we're appreciative of getting this grant all the time for this, and, uh, we did pass this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Yes, we did. Um, and we did talk about, I guess it's about the same amount every year.
No, we are able to get every year.
Except when they did the, uh, the planning, uh, with the county of the-
Yeah, they were able to secure, I think, fifteen thousand dollars for the heritage plan-
Right.
-that was completed.
So, um, so, regular thing, pardon me? Yeah, we get it in July, right, for, uh, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. Um, any comments or questions from council members? Hearing done, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, we'll move to item twelve, resolution awarding twenty-seventeen contracts for street line painting and vituuminous seal coating for the city of Williamsport.
Be hereby resolved, the city council of the city of Williamsport awards the twenty-seventeen contracts for street line painting of streets throughout the city and vituuminous seal coating of roads listed on attached one to the following vendors at the prices listed on the respective schedules of prices attached. I'll let Tom finish. Do you want me to finish the vendors?
Yeah, would you need the-
Okay, sure. Street, the street line painting is OH Stripping Incorporated, and the total contract amount was thirteen thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. The vituuminous seal coating was Handmaker East, and the total contract amount was fourteen thousand sixty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, is there a motion on the resolution?
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Um, Mr. Sello?
Yeah, yeah, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Vice President, Allison, members of council. Tell me, street line painting and vituuminous seal coating is not the most exciting part of the- Actually, I kind of like the food truck topic myself, but, uh, anyway, uh, street line painting, uh, vituuminous seal coating are both, uh, yearly maintenance items that, uh, are performed throughout the city. Uh, bidding, uh, was done through the West Branch Council of Governments, uh, or known as COG oftentimes, but, uh, we submit our quantities to PennDOT as one of twenty-eight, uh, townships, uh, cities, uh, boroughs, and, uh, PennDOT puts it out to bid, and, uh, the, uh, the low bids came back, uh, for each item, OH Stripping for the street line painting, and that includes, uh, all the, uh, street line painting citywide, the double yellows, uh, the white skip line and white edge line. And, uh, what we typically do is, uh, uh, the, the contractor can typically do it in about two days' time throughout the citywide, which is pretty good, and, uh, but what we do is we have someone ride, uh, with the contractor to make sure the job is, uh, done thoroughly and completely, and, uh, actually, last year, uh, the, the true test is, uh, going out at nighttime, really, to inspect, uh, to make sure the job is done properly and the, uh, the lines are, uh, illuminated. Uh, seal coating is what most people refer to as tar and chip, uh, that's what we use, uh, oftentimes, uh, to try to maintain a number of our alleys, um, uh, that are basically too expensive to, uh, to try to repave, so this is a very cost-effective method to, uh, try to save a number of our alleys. Uh, actually, the pricing, uh, for each also is down slightly from last year, which is a good thing, so, that's all I have, really.
Thank you, Mr. Sello.
Um, I believe- Excuse me, it was, uh-
Right.
-reviewed by finance and public works and passed to council with a full recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Smith, Public Works?
This was reviewed, uh, on this past Tuesday at Public Works, and, um, as Mr. Sello has stated, this isn't the most popular thing that we have to go over, but, uh, what we were, uh, looking at, uh, in the notes, uh, is we do have some warranties and guarantees, and, uh, there's going to be, uh, testing done, uh, to make certain that the, the material meets the specifications, and the one thing that I had asked about was the, uh, paint. Um, do they get down here to the local paint store and buy the paint and apply it? And the answer to that was no, it has to meet PennDOT's specifications for, uh, the paint. So, we felt pretty comfortable with, uh, that it is going to be, uh, uh, testing involved in it, and that we also have, as stated on this one page, we have a one-year, uh, warranty for defects which occur during that year upon completion of the project. We did pass this, uh, with a positive recommendation to full council for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and Mrs. Katz, we did review it?
This came from, to finance, and one of the things, we were happy that the cost is down a little bit, and, uh, and like everybody says, it's really exciting to discuss, but I would really like to hear you and Mrs. Frank say vituuminous, vitu- how do you say that?
Vituuminous.
Seal, three times fast. But, uh, yes, it was passed with a positive recommendation.
And I, I can add also that, uh, uh, we do have PennDOT's blessing, uh, you know, to withhold payment unless we are fully satisfied, so-
That's good. Um, the only thing I've added to that is-
The only other thing is, is to do the whole city in two days.
Yeah.
We've always found that amazing, that they're able to do that in two days.
Very, very effective.
And that you always have somebody alongside, to watch what they are doing, too, that's the other thing that we were aware of, that you said that you, you know, take care, that somebody from streets and parks is with them.
Right.
And it might not be very exciting, but we really can't get by without the street lines, it would be chaos, and I know, um, alleys aren't an exciting thing unless people park back there and use them, and, uh, they really appreciate them being maintained in some form or shape. Um, and the, Mr. Novello?
Uh, just quickly, uh, as Tommy said, this is sort of a routine kind of a thing for them, not very exciting, but at the same time, this summer particularly, we have a pretty fair group of streets that are going to be repaired, repaved, and setback and better motion, so maybe the street painting this year a little bit more meaningful than it has been in the recent past.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thank you. Well said. Any other comments or questions? Um, if not, um, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, and that brings us to our last item, certificates of appropriateness, um, which we have several from HARB tonight. Item two, SMC Realty, nine-twenty-nine West Fourth Street, um, wooden post columns, um, and painting, and ports, a lot of stuff going on there. Um, item three, Alpha Business Center LLC, nine-forty-one West Third Street, that's the old, uh, business school. Constructed ten-foot diameter octagonal gazebo at the rear of the property. Hmm, that'll be a nice aesthetic improvement back there, and, um, a mailbox. Um, item four, Matthew and Lori Somerson, seven-twenty-three, twenty-five Gray Street, and they're going to install some black architectural, uh, shingles and a gutter system, and, uh, remove siding from the front porch apron, repair rod of wood, that sounds nice, repair and retain existing porch posts, and, uh, some painting as well. Um, and item five, uh, looks like, uh, another double there for Matthew and Lori Somerson, seven-twenty-seven, seven-twenty-nine Gray Street, and some of the same, same things there. Um, item six, Matthew and Lori Somerson, nine-twenty-two, West Third Street, and removing a ramp from the front west side and doing some repairs to the railing and, uh, porch piers. Item seven, Victoria Holdings, um, nine-fifty-five, West Fourth, replace stockade fence damaged by wind, rebuild changing fence style, and, uh, some painting. Item eight, O-U-R-S-E, ORSE, I would say, Group LLC, seven-seven-seven, West Third Street, uh, complete previously approved installation, installation of hardy board, which we dealt with before, we know what that is, on rear addition, and paint the house trim. Um, and that concludes those items from HARB. Uh, do we have a motion in a, a second?
I'll move.
Second.
Any comments or questions from many council members? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Um, item, I think I've got the wrong, yes, item fifteen, except for filing. Finance meeting minutes of, uh, February fourteenth, twenty-seventeen, public work minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, public safety minutes of March seventh, twenty-seventeen, and HARB minutes, May sixteenth, twenty-seventeen. Um, is there a motion in a second?
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Uh, any questions or corrections or comments about any of the minutes? If not, Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Item sixteen, announcements, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held here on Thursday, June eighth, twenty-seventeen, at seven-thirty PM in City Hall Council Chambers. Uh, upcoming meetings, Monday, May twenty-ninth, City Hall closed Memorial Day, I hope it doesn't rain and everybody has a good day. Tuesday, May thirtieth, uh, twelve PM, Planning Commission, uh, and at seven PM, PM, the Citizens Corps. Uh, Tuesday, June sixth, twelve PM, Public Works, three-thirty PM, Finance Committee, and Thursday, June eighth, seven-thirty PM, Council Meeting. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Uh, any comments or items from council members? Uh, Mr. Smith?
I was a bit intrigued this morning when I read the newspaper. An article that says, "Williamsport Parking: Creative Financing Will Help Build an Authority Williamsport Parking Authority attempting to relocate its office in Pine Street, down the street and into the Trade and Transit Center One at Pine and West Third, has approved the borrowing of one million dollars as a first step toward funding the design and construction of its proposed new office space. To secure the funding needed to accomplish the task, the authority approved a resolution to borrow the cash, adding to existing financing it has in place. It called the move "creative financing" because it gets around the entanglements such borrowing would face if the city applied for the loan, according to Dr. Anthony Sepola, Authority Chairman. Expected cost of the office space design and construction at the building where the Scoop Restaurant is estimated to be in excess of four hundred thousand dollars, according to Sepola. But it won't impact parking rates or taxpayers because it's borrowed by the authority. Another financial voice spoke about the option at the meeting before the vote. "It is easier for the authority to borrow the money than the city, which has more restrictions," said William Nichols, city finance director and general manager of River Valley Transit, which owns the Trade and Transit Centers One and Two. "The procedure will work by the authority, getting the loan from M&amp;T Bank, and then presenting the money to River Valley Transit. As the new tenant, the authority will pay rent each month to River Valley Transit, which then will use the money as part of paying down its debt service," Sepola said. "No drawdowns in the money will be done without the vote of the authority." There's something here that I don't understand. First of all, River Valley Transit is owned by the city of Williamsport, it's not an entity unto its own. Our budget book shows that we approve their budget. So technically, River Valley Transit is owned by the city of Williamsport. Okay, if it's going to cost six hundred or a million dollars, they're going to borrow, it's going to cost four hundred thousand dollars to renovate this area, what are you going to do with the other six hundred thousand dollars? That seems to be an interesting question. Where's that going to go? Uh, I don't understand the logistics of the authority getting the loan, and then they're going to give the money to River Valley Transit, which is the city. Then they're going to pay rent each month to River Valley Transit, which then will use the money as part of paying down its debt service. Either the paper has got this incorrect, or I don't understand it, or there's, or there's a stinky kettle of fish here. I think there's more questions than there are answers. I guess I would like to know, since River Valley is involved in it, River Valley Transit, and the city owns River Valley Transit, um, is there going to be some contracts between the city and the parking authority concerning this, and will they be brought to city council for approval? I would like to receive more information on this, of how this is going to work, why it's working this way. I mean, when I go out and borrow money for something, I don't turn that money over to somebody else, and then they pay the loan off, I pay it off myself. Now, perhaps there's a very valid reason for this, I'm not questioning that, but I would certainly like to know more about how this whole thing operates, because the city is involved in it. River Valley Transit is the city of Williamsport. You know, I've heard for many years, it's its own entity that operates by itself, no it doesn't. When Mr. Nichols wants buses, he comes to city council. When he wants to purchase or lease tires, he comes to city council. So it doesn't operate autonomously as the authorities do, such as the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority, uh, Sewer Authority, and the Parking Authority. So I guess what I'm trying to find out here is, what's this connection between this situation with this money, and where's the other six hundred thousand dollars going to go? So I would hope that in the-
May I respond to that?
... coming days, somebody can present a lot of information-
Can I respond to that, Mr. Smith? First of all, I do not, uh, respect your comments that you made, I think they're very disrespectful, and I take exception to what you're saying. Number two, we manage the Williamsport Parking Authority, and this is something we have done before. Uh, I guess I was supposed to come to the Public Safety Committee like everybody else, sorry I didn't, to explain it to you, but I will come before the Finance Committee, explain it, explain how it works very well, will save money for the Parking Authority, they're currently paying rent, they'd like to get new offices, we have extra space to do that in a city facility, and it is much easier to go through an authority, and that's why you create authorities, so that they can borrow money and not impact the city's level of debt. And again, I don't, I don't respect what you're saying, and I don't know if, what are your, I guess you're running for reelection, so I guess that's why you're making the comments, but I take exception to everything you're saying, thank you.
We own the River Valley Transit.
You do not own River Valley Transit, the federal government owns River Valley Transit.
It's under the city. It's under the city.
I'm sorry, you know, I guess you want to be mayor of River Valley Transit, but that's not the way it is.
It would have been much easier, Mr. Nichols, if you would have given this entire explanation before we pick it up and read it in the newspaper.
Again, I'm sorry I didn't come to Public Safety Committee, sit through one of your meetings, all of yours.
Where's the $600,000 going?
I will give you a full report.
Thank you, we would appreciate that.
Mr. Nichols, will we be at our next Finance Committee meeting getting this information?
That's exactly right. The only act the Parking Authority is to close on the loan, nothing be drawn down until further information is provided, and how they're going to proceed with their proposed office relocation, and the additional money that the Parking Authority, it's not all going to River Valley Transit, so that's another error by Mr. Smith and the projects that the Parking Authority wants to advance. And I'll be glad to bring that to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Okay.
Janice, would you make sure that appears on the agenda of our Finance Committee meeting on June 6th? Thank you.
And, of course, any council people are welcome to attend any committee meeting, so if there are other questions-
Well, for those maybe that couldn't make it, we'd like a full report-
Definitely, yeah.
-on this situation.
I think we can see that everybody gets the information that we get.
Oh, of course.
Yeah. Okay, any other items from council members? Items from the administration?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Good evening. This is a public announcement, there will be a box seat sale at BB&amp;T Ballpark at Historic Bowman Field on Saturday, June 10th, from 9 to 3. The location will be in the Elm Park area, look for signs. Price is $50 for a set of two connected seats, they are numbered 1 and 2, and 3 and 4. Cash or checks will be accepted, no credit cards. The box seats were installed in 1994, and now, 23 years later, are being replaced in the current Bowman Field renovation project. First come, first served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and to reiterate, it's going to be in the Elm Park across the street area. And for anyone in the public that wants to know why they're being sold as pairs, they're connected. They were installed that way, so, and ordered that way, so you get two for the price of one. We'll look at it that way anyhow. And we hope to raise some dollars from that, and at the same time, give citizens a slice of memorabilia.
One other thing, if I may add, someone asked about why are they so inexpensive compared to other ones? We have to remember, these are not floor seats.
Right.
They are connected to risers, so if you want to sit on them, basically, you're going to have to connect them to a concrete wall, or you're going to have to purchase legs for them, which you can do online.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay. Pardon me. Yes, I think the mayor did say it's Saturday, June 10th, 9 AM to 3 PM. And look for Joe Pavlock, he's going to oversee the whole thing. Okay, and any other items from the administration? We'll move to the public then. I see, Mr. Miller, you know the routine?
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street. Good evening, Vice President Allison, council members, mayor. As you know, or may remember, me coming with photographs of streets in deplorable condition. The two photographs I bring tonight are ones that have been put on the list to be repaired. If I put four people in my car and drive on it, I'm going to suffer severe damage to the undercarriage of my vehicle. And as taxpayer, I don't think the city should have to pay for damage, but it's through neglect of the city. And when you say you're going to fix something and don't, I've been told before by council members, well, you just don't understand. No, I do understand. Y'all aren't doing your job. Plain and simple, you're not doing your job. When is Army Lane going to be fixed? When are some of the streets going to be fixed that I brought before City Council? It's your job. I'm sorry, if you don't like your job, there's the door, leave. But you have to do your job. I can't fix the street, I don't have a milling machine. I've brought in pictures of dead trees throughout the city. Up at Brandon Park one year, when they were having the Brandon Park Days, I think it was called, a member from the DCNR, DNRC, Department of Conservation Natural Resources, I pointed out some dead trees. He said, "Yeah, those got to come down." Did they come down? In the storm. How come the city isn't doing its job? I pay my taxes. You know, do I have to hire people to do it? Oh, wait, no, the city's tree guy has to approve it. I've taken numerous times going around checking storm drains and catch basins where they're collapsing in. How come the city isn't doing its job? I'm sorry, it's not a very thankful job. I know it costs money, my taxes cost money, too. I don't come down here with rainbows and unicorns. So, my frustration and anger is, y'all aren't doing your job. You say you got to be responsible stewards of the public trust. Trust what? The proof is, y'all aren't doing your job. Please do your job, or else I will seek other methods to force you to do your job. Thank you.
Any other requests from the public tonight? Just please give your name and the address for the public record.
Frank Steckel, 619 First Ave., Williamsport. I came here before with a problem with the police department. I'm glad the chief is sitting here now, he wasn't here last time. I asked to have a man named Ed McCoy arrested, he's Chief Probation Officer for the County of Wycoming, his wife is Joy McCoy, she's a judge. Originally, I asked Captain Miller, that's Jody Miller, he had every reason under the sun why he couldn't do it. And then I went to the chief, who made sure I knew his middle initial when I told him I was going to complain to the state before he hung up. Then I went to the mayor, and the mayor, to his credit, directed the chief of police to do an investigation and leave it to the DA and the courts to make a decision rather than the chief of police. At that point, from my understanding, the chief appointed or delegated the same Captain Miller to do the investigation, who was so lackadaisical, in my opinion, once again, to begin with. From the last thing I understand, from what I understand, the investigation's over, I don't know if that's true or not, I've never been given anything in writing, I had to make up my own report, I was never, never actually sat down with an officer and made the report, I had to write one up. From what I understand, the investigation's over, from what I understand from Captain Miller, there were, I know for fact, because I was there, I was the victim, there were eight witnesses involved immediately at the site in the county courthouse during business hours. Two, according to Mr. Miller, were questioned. One was the perpetrator, and one was county sheriff, who showed up at the scene with another county sheriff. According to Mr. Miller, nothing happened, I'm still wondering why two sheriffs showed up at the scene. And according to, not Mr. Sheriff Lusk, but one of his assistants, there's information that I can subpoena, well, I guess I'll have to subpoena, because the Williamsport Police Department can't seem to do it. Basically, it's a lackadaisical, and I don't even think you could say it's lackadaisical. I think, to be trite, I think that the, it's sort of like a perk now, because I've had other incidences at the courthouse, it's almost like a perk to these people now that they are allowed to break the law, and they won't be prosecuted because of their position in the community, in law enforcement. And this chief, it seems to be his, that seems to be his modus operandi. So, that's not tolerable, of course, we all agree that police are the ones that have to be put above a standard if nothing else. So now, my next move, I guess, is to send everybody involved a registered letter, perhaps, but basically, to go to the Attorney, State Attorney General's office, and I find that the state usually is a little more, in the smaller communities, the state usually sees them all about the same. I think there'll be some, you know, something will be done about it. Unfortunately, this is just, it was just a summary offense, disorderly conduct offense. But now you're going to have the police chief, perhaps one of your captains, perhaps everybody on council, I don't know, might be served a felony summons for obstruction of justice. It seems like a small thing, but it's not a small thing at all. Because these people are in positions of authority in the police department, and the other, if you want to call them rookies or the people coming up, look to them and expect them to not only lead, but to make correct decisions. And this is way out of line, this is, I mean, for around here, this is actually the status quo, I guess, but it's way out of line for what's acceptable. And I think when it reaches the state level, I think we're going to be embarrassed by it. I don't, you know, I, when I grew up in Montezville, state police seemed a little different than they are now, this person's supposed to be a 25-year member, I don't know. I point to the fact that the governor, our current governor, looked for chief of the state police outside the state police, and I think that says something in itself. Every time I've come in contact with him anymore, it's literally disgusting.
Well, Mr. Steckel, it's common, we allow three minutes-
Okay.
-and you pass that, so-
Right, I understand.
And you're reiterating some things that you've-
Well, the big message is, I'm going to the Attorney General's office with this now.
Okay, that's your corroboration, and that's your right as a citizen, so-
Absolutely, I know that.
Exercise that, and-
Yeah, I'm let down by council in general, too, on this, I mean, they'll spend hours talking about things that are important, but when you come to police corruption, they don't seem to have the time. I think that's indicative of a very sad situation on our elected officials.
You've made your point, sir. Anybody else from the public? Mrs. Smith? If not, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.